Hello, I'm Lorette Legan, President of the Jacksonville Onslow Chamber of Commerce. And on behalf of the Chamber's Governmental Affairs Committee, I want to thank you for joining us for our Forum Onslow. Our committee works with government agencies on issues that affect our business community. We monitor legislative issues that impact local businesses. We promote partnerships between business, government, military, and education. And we use these forums to create awareness on topics that are important to our entire community, such as the election of those that represent us on the state and local level. We are privileged to have Piedmont Natural Gas as a sponsor for this Meet the Candidates Forum. Tammy Thurman, the Piedmont Natural Gas Community Relations Manager, was unable to join us, but she did send a message. So now, a word from our sponsor.
I am Kelsey Stiglitz, Business Services Manager for the Jacksonville Onslow Chamber of Commerce. We are proud to partner with Piedmont Natural Gas today. Events like this are so necessary for all communities across our state because they empower each one of us with knowledge. We are living in challenging times now, and all elections are critical for our economy, continuing education for our children, and what the new norm will be defined as. So Piedmont Natural Gas thanks the Jacksonville Onslow Chamber of Commerce for hosting Meet the Candidates. Candidates, thank you for your leadership and continue to help make a difference in our communities, for the state of our communities will rest in our hands. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelsey. And with that, I will turn the show over to our moderator, Mr. Elliot Potter.
Thank you. You know, we've made it here. It's a few oddities, but not unlike what else we've experienced this year. So we're going to get it done, and I'm looking forward to a very informative program. I do thank you for participating. This is the forum for candidates for the 2020 General Election for the Onslow County Board of Education. We have eight candidates, and we have all eight candidates here. They're seeking one of the four seats that are open on the board in this election. This is just the second general election we've had since the legislature passed a local bill that changed the school board elections to a partisan vote, with candidates either running under a party label, or, as we have this year, if they can qualify as unaffiliated. All of the seats in this race are at large. So today, we have four Republicans with us, one Democrat, and three candidates who have filed as unaffiliated. So with that, we will go over a few rules and make this as fun and informative exercise of democracy as we possibly can. You are mostly familiar with the format. I've gone over it. Some of you participated in these events before, but I'm going to go over it again for the sake of the audience and for the sake of those who might be new to the process. The program will consist of three parts. We have a one-minute opening statement, and Ms. LaBriado?
Yes.
Can't wait to say that name, and I got it right, didn't I? All the way around the first time, and then we'll start with a round of questionings with Mr. Wiggins, and we'll go back. So that's how we'll, and we'll sort of try to keep an order that way. But we have a one-minute opening statement, a question-and-answer period, and a two-minute closing statement. Each candidate will have 60 seconds to answer each question, and of course, I will try to rotate the order of questioning. At the end of the responses, the full response, round of responses, candidates also have a time to use one of their 30-second rebuttal cards. You will get two opportunities to make rebuttals. And so you're, in the interest of time, you're limited to that, so please use them wisely. You can just raise your card, and we'll take note and try to get to you, as I say, right after we have moved through the entire round of questions. Please use your rebuttal card during the Q&amp;A period, not during the summation. So two minutes should be long enough for your summation. Anyway, at the end, we will have the summations, two minutes, and if there's an issue that we did not discuss, great chance to bring it up right there. Or if you wanted to elaborate on something that perhaps happened earlier in the program, please do so. I would like to make this note, and unlike what you might have seen in some other races, this is a forum, it's not a debate. So we ask that you respond to the audience and to me when I ask the question, and not each other. That's what we try to do with that. We've always handled it that way, and it seems to work. We have asked the audience, or we will ask the audience, to refrain from applause during the program. If they see fit, we can give you a round of applause at the end, providing, we will allow that if you adhere to the time limits. Otherwise, it may not happen. I want to tell you a little bit about, you know, how the lighting system works. When you see a yellow light, that means you have about 30 seconds to end your response. We will give you the yellow light with 15 seconds, and it makes a little extra noise during the rebuttal, right? So you'll hear that, too. But so, the 30-second period. And when you see the red light, this is important, please, and you see the red light, know that your time is up. Complete your sentence. It may be awkward to just stop it there, but that's what we asked you to do, is just to stop your sentence there. If you feel like you need more time, maybe you can use a rebuttal card. During your opening statement, again, we'll start with Ms. LaBriado. We ask each candidate to state your name, give us some background information, introduce yourselves, maybe where you reside and your occupation, and we ask that you give us an idea about why you're running for this office. So if you're ready to start, we'll get going.
Okay.
LaBriado, introduce yourself.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Potter. My name is Takenya LaBriado, and I have been a resident here in Onslow County for close to three decades. I moved to Onslow County in 1990. I graduated from White Oak High School, and my father retired here, here in Onslow County. I also raised two daughters in Onslow County School District. Shortly after I graduated high school, I went to Coastal Community College, and I became a certified nurse assistant. I worked my way up from LPN RN, a bachelor's degree, and currently I have a master's in business administration, and I'm in my last year for my doctorate degree. You can clearly see that I'm a supporter of public education and also vocational trade. I have 20 years of leadership experience in the healthcare industry. I manage nursing homes, up to 100 employees, and currently I work at the local hospital as a performance improvement coordinator. I am running because I want to make sure that I am able to be a voice here for Onslow County. I also was an instructor for Coastal Community College.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Quick minute.
All right.
All right.
Hello. Hello, Onslow. I live in Snead's Ferry with my husband and our two youngest children, who are part of our Onslow County school system currently. I have an Associate's in Criminal Justice and Business Administration, certificate programs like Office Management, Childcare, and I'm currently enrolled in a micro master's program for social work practice. I was a reporter with Jacksonville Daily News until I pursued office. I'm a North Carolina Fourth District Judicial Advocate, where I advocate for abused and neglected children through the court system. I'm also the president of Guarding at Light and Volunteer Association, where we assist and help children who are placed in kinship care. I've taught preschool and been a Lynx instructor, educating military spouses on resources in the community. I've been a manager in hospitality training, recruiting and retaining staff. I believe with my experience professionally and as a parent of Onslow County students and in other states across this nation, I believe I can be a vital asset to the board, expanding horizons for better community relationships, seeking and presenting solutions, being an advocate for all involved, serving focused on the best interests of the child.
Thank you very much. All right, Mr. Reddick.
I'm Ken Reddick. I live here in Jacksonville. My Board of Education campaign slogan is putting students first, and as long as we do that, I do believe that we can make the very best decisions for the stakeholders in our communities. I want you to think about these three qualifications. My experience, I have 44 years of experience as a teacher, coach, principal, curriculum director, and consultant. Since my appointment to the Board in 2018, I've attended all the meetings, trainings, helped select the new superintendent, guided us through Hurricane Florence and during the COVID outbreak. Second, I'm invested. I certainly understand all the laws and the rules and the guidelines and policies that affect education. At each board meeting now, we have a focus on education, on some instruction, which is very important. And so as a resident of Onslow County for 50 years, I do have a vested interest in this community, and I look forward to talking with you further.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Speranza.
Thank you for having us here today, Mr. Potter. My name is Joe Speranza, and I'm obviously running for the Board of Education. I graduated from South Beckenburg High School back in 1991. I enlisted into the Navy. 26 years later, I retired as a senior chief hospital corpsman during that time, and since then, I've had a bachelor's degree in business administration, a master's degree in management and leadership, a second master's degree in procurement and acquisitions, and I have a master's certificate in government contracting. I have a strong background in human resources, financial planning, and facilities management. The most important job that I have is actually as a husband of 21 years and a father of two kids, both of which have come through our Onslow County school systems. My son graduated in 2019. My daughter is currently a junior at Jacksonville High School. I'm running for the Board of Education because I believe that our education of our children is a paramount goal that we should have, and I feel that with all my background, I can contribute to the board and the successful endeavor of teaching our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Taylor.
My name is Earl Taylor, and I reside in the White Oak District. I'm a graduate of East Carolina University, earning degrees in music education and school administration. I'm the former band director of White Oak High School. I served as the Director of Arts Education at the district level. I retired in 2009 with 36-plus years of service in Onslow County schools, and I'm a current adjunct music instructor at Coastal Carolina Community College. I'm the past president of North Carolina Music Educators Association, elected to the Onslow County Board of Ed in 2012 and 2016, and I currently serve as Vice President of the North Carolina School Boards Association. I'm a member of the Governmental Affairs Committee, Jacksonville Onslow Chamber of Commerce, Crime Stoppers Auxiliary Board, Board of Directors for SAT Incorporated, currently President of the Onslow Chapter of North Carolina Symphony, and a lifetime member of the Jacksonville Civic Town Club. Married to my wife Pam for over 46 years. I have two grown children, both products of Onslow County schools, and we are members of Trinity United Methodist Church.
All right, well, thank you very much. And Ms. Thomas.
Thank you. Thank you for having me today. I'm Pam Thomas, and I am running for the Board of Education. I've served on the Board of Education for four terms, and I'm looking forward to serving another term. My reason for wanting to be on this Board of Education is to continue the work that I feel is still something that we need to be doing. Students are the heart of what we do. That is, we have to worry about our employees, but we also have to worry about the effects of whatever we do on the classroom. I live here in Jacksonville. I've been a resident of Onslow County for, since I was an infant. Also, I have been very actively involved in civic organizations such as the Chamber, Economic Development. I'm a Rotary Club member. I also serve as the Treasurer for Onslow Community Outreach, and I work in any capacity that I can. I think that helps me be a good liaison between the community and education.
Thank you. Mr. Whitfield.
Hello, I'm Eric Whitfield from Hubert. The reason I'm running for a school board is, some of you may know, I really have a long-term vision. I wasn't planning to get elected this early. I have a vision to be on the Board of Commissioners later on in my life, maybe 2024, 2028, and I want, I think it's exciting that a normal person can run for public office, and so I take advantage of that opportunity, enjoy my American experience, because I love this country, I love our democratic process, I love our traditions, I love, you know, our freedoms that we have here in America, and I just love to enjoy myself. I love to enjoy life, and this is something I'm good at. And so I thought, I'll run for office again, and I will do it again, and again, and again.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Whitfield. Mr. Wiggins.
I am Paul Wiggins. I am an educator and a teacher, heart and soul, 100%. I am a husband. Debbie and I have been married for 49 years. We have three children, all of which went to school in Onslow County schools, and all three are college graduates, and I have three wonderful grandchildren, seven, five, and three. I, too, am a product of Onslow County schools. I was born and raised here. After graduating from Jacksonville High School, I attended Appalachian State University, a BS degree in mathematics. Upon that graduation, I came back home. I wanted to be here in my county. I accepted a position at Dixon High School, 17 years. I was a math teacher, a football coach, a track coach, a wrestling coach, athletic director, and an assistant principal. After that, I became the principal at Swansburg Middle School, and then the principal at White Oak High School in 1990. I think my experience, my desire, and my commitment.
Thank you. All right. Well, we're going to let you start off, Mr. Wiggins, with the first question, which is, how would you assess the school system's response to COVID-19? I mean, obviously, that's a big topic right now. What lessons are there that we can act upon going forward?
Mr. Potter, I'm not one who points a finger. I think the many thousands of students that I've worked with through the years, the teachers that I were colleagues with, and as a principal, the teachers that I worked with, we weren't about being a part of the problem, we were about the solution. It's awfully easy to stand on the sideline and point a finger. We've done the very best that we could. We are experiencing something we've never dealt with before. It's like learning to swim, and you have things up top, but this came from underneath. I think we, as a board, have listened to our health people, as you've seen at our meetings, our health department folks are there. It is a great concern for us. We want our students to learn and to be educated, but we want them to be safe. But I think as a team, we've done really a good job trying to get our students back, face-to-face, students and teachers. Nothing can take the place of that.
Thank you. Mr. Whitfield, you want me to read the question again? Okay.
The COVID-19 caught us all by surprise. It's something we haven't seen in this country, I believe, in 102 years, and so there was really no way to prepare for something like this. I think the school board, you know, listened to the information that they had and responded in the best way they could, and there's never going to be a perfect answer, and you're always going to be criticized for anything that doesn't work out perfectly. So I think the school board done fine, and I think that any candidate up here would probably, you know, be able to adapt and handle the situation just as well. There's a lot of good people up here. I think all of us are good people and are concerned about the health and safety of everybody involved. So I really have no qualms with the way it was handled. I think they did a swell job.
Thank you. Ms. Thomas.
I could ditto everything that's been said, and I'm sure the other candidates will make similar remarks. We were running with our feet on the ground, but we were having to jump over a lot of obstacles because every day, there was a different challenge, a different change that we had to make. The school system worked very closely with day-to-day contact with the county manager, with the health department, because our focus was really on the safety of children and what could we do to continue to have some type of learning. We did that, and we are moving back, you know, in Monday, we will go into more face-to-face instruction. This was a learning opportunity for us, and I hope we don't have to repeat it, but I can assure you, just like with Florence, no matter who's on this Board of Education, we're going to come back stronger and have better plans, stronger plans, so that we'll be a little bit better prepared, even though this was an unknown to us.
Thank you. Mr. Taylor.
I think the general public needs to realize that our system or institution delivering, teaching, and learning was turned upside down, and it has, there is no manual on a shelf that you can pull and say, this is how you respond to an epidemic like we have. Our staff, our superintendent, his staff, and principals have been working diligently to come up with a plan to attack, to address this moving target. I think they've done a wonderful job in making sure that our first priority is the safety and security and the health of our students, our teachers, our staff, our bus drivers, everyone connected in this process. Again, we're dealing with a moving target, and I think everybody is busting a gut to get back to Plan A, your restaurants, you name it, because we're all impacted, and it's hard to comprehend, but I think we're moving slowly but carefully.
Thank you. Mr. Speranza, the question on the table is, how would you assess the school system's response to COVID-19, and what lessons are there that we can act upon going forward?
Well, I know there were many constraints that were placed on the school board when this came out, those from the state as well as from the government itself, and I do believe that the school board acted in the best interest that they could when they were putting everything together and putting our plans of actions together. But there is a lot of room for improvement. There were a lot of kids that were left behind when it came to the distance learning and not being able to do it, more apparent than in our EC communities and those children that have IEPs. It's become a lot more difficult for them to complete a lot of their tasks, and their education is falling a little bit back. So there is a learning process that's involved, and I would like to be part of the policymaking, which is one of the reasons I'm running for the board, so that way we can actually address some of these issues and start working towards plans that could help all of our students, whether they are in the classroom or whether they have to be online.
All right, thank you. Mr. Reddick.
I think COVID-19 was more of a probability than anything. It was a problem that gave us an opportunity to put a lot of moving parts in motion. As already been mentioned, probably the number-one thing was safety. We certainly had to adhere to the governor's guidelines, but our focus all along was to, how soon can we get children back to school? And during that process, how well can we deliver instruction in a meaningful way? And certainly, there's nothing that will ever replace face-to-face instruction, but I do believe because we had the technology in place, we had the infrastructure in place, I think overall, we would probably say we did a good job with that. I believe we did a great job in working with our community partners, not only the health department, but all areas of local government, and I think the lesson here is you can't be over-prepared for anything.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Oakley.
I think the board made a great decision whenever they came to the time to decide if they were going to reopen schools in any capacity or not. However, I believe that there should be a more proactive approach versus reactive. You know, the district had from March until August to prepare for the next phase, no matter what that next phase was going to be, whether it was fully Plan A, Plan B, Plan C. It seems that there was a lack of preparation in that aspect. You know, we didn't know what Governor Cooper was going to decide, but still, you know you're going to have three options. Go ahead and start making strides and plan for all three of those, so then when the time comes, you're prepared for it. Another thing, it's like OVS, you know, children that are in OVS, you know, I was told, hey, you know, you're supposed to have asynchronous and synchronous instruction. Well, that is true. However, OVS does not have a standard or a mandate, and the board was not aware of that. So if you're a board member, how were you not aware that this school system does not have a standard or a mandate of instruction?
Thank you. Ms. LaBriado.
I believe that at first, they did a good job at getting the feedback from the community, you know, getting their opinions on what they would prefer, you know, Plan A, Plan B, or Plan C. So that was a good thing, but I think that we should have did more forecasting, you know? We should make sure that we are forecasting any events that might come our way. So we should have a plan on what is to come as far as planning. There were children that were left behind. We had our EC students that have struggled at home, that the parents were struggling. So were they part of that conversation? Were they a part of the agenda to make sure that, you know, everybody was ready for virtual learning? So I think that we could have did better with making sure that we included all students. I have experience with working with exceptional children, so I know that a structured plan can affect the way a child learns. You know, you have to make sure that it is structured, because if it's not, they can fall behind.
Thank you. And we'll stay at this end of the table, and Ms. Oakley, you'll have first crack at this question. We'll stay here, and then we'll wrap around to you, Mr. Wiggins, after we get through that end of the table. So make sure we can do it that way. Okay, the question's this, what can the Board of Education do to help Onslow students who might have fallen behind in their progress because of the various interruptions that have been taking place in the past couple of years?
The key to that, first of all, is to acknowledge that some children are regressing, and also to communicate with the parents. The parents are the first line of a child's instruction. Child's education starts at home, no matter what it is. So, you know, to communicate with the parents and to also allow outside resources. You know, we have lots of retired teachers in this county, and parents and other stakeholders that are qualified to assist in tutoring and to help us get these children back up to speed. So I would support, you know, just communication, being honest about what's happening, and acknowledge that we do have an issue with children regressing. You know, Florence already put a hurt on our school system. So this isn't just a COVID crisis. We're still dealing with the effects from Florence. So now, it's practically like we have two to three years of instruction time lost for these children, and that is detrimental to the life of an elementary-age student. So I just think that we need to be honest, acknowledge, talk to the parents, take feedback from them, and move forward effectively.
Thank you. Ms. LaBriado.
Yeah, I definitely believe that we need transparency. Onslow County Schools has already been behind in our benchmarks with math and reading. So with COVID-19, we are going to be back some more. So we need to make sure that we look at, you know, ways to get the children in Onslow County above the benchmarks for math and reading. We need to find out why they're behind, and we need to look at best practices. We need to see what school districts are performing well, and what are they putting in place to have a successful district? So I believe in looking at best practices. Right now, Onslow County, we are below the benchmark for math and reading. Math, we're at 38%. Reading, we're at 46%. So we need to drill down on why we are behind, and we need to get our children back, and we deserve better. Onslow County needs to do well for the children, because at a whole, it affects our community.
All right, well, thank you. And like I say, we'll swing to this end of the table now, and Mr. Wiggins, the question is, what can the Board of Education do to help Onslow students who might have fallen behind in their progress because of the interruptions of the past couple of years?
No doubt that it's been a very difficult time. As I said before, there's no substitute for face-to-face with teachers and students, so we're going to have to overcome that. It's not going to be just a teacher or a school situation, it's a community situation, and we're going to need parents, we're going to need businesses helping, and our teachers, and certainly, we're going to have to reassess. Once you lose things, that trying to get that gap back, that deficiency gap, is a very difficult thing. So it's going to take great teamwork on the part of all of us, and yes, there are going to have to be a lot of special things that we do to get those children back to the level and above that level.
Okay, Mr. Whitfield.
This is something that you deal with all the time, even in non-emergency situations or non-dramatic situations, but I guess you just have to step up your game, and like Mr. Wiggins was saying, you've got to get the community involved, because it's a bigger problem than it is at normal times, where, you know, there's going to be more children that are behind than normally, and so you're going to have to get volunteers to help tutor. Maybe the teachers may have to give up a Saturday or stay a little bit later, I don't know, but it will require a community involvement, and sometimes, that's not there, and it's very unfortunate that that's the way we have become as a society, but if people have, you know, the time, the ability, and the patience to work with these children, you know, we're going to have to give them incentives to be volunteers to help with these problems that we're facing.
All right, thank you. Ms. Thomas.
This is a very challenging for us. I know that there is a learning gap that we have had for several years, not just because of Florence and not just because of COVID. But I will say that since Florence, we've had pop-up camps in the communities, we've had faith-based communities who, right now, today, Wednesday, are conducting activities in their churches, in their fellowship halls, to help students with their remote learning. We also are looking at mentoring from male partnerships, because oftentimes, the male is not available in the family, so we're structuring with some of the organizations that have males available to do those kind of mentors and tutoring. Our faith-based communities and some of our municipalities are engaging services, just like the school system is internally, from Boys and Girls Club and YMCA, so that they can help with these type of mentorings.
Thank you. Mr. Taylor.
I think the thing that, as a board and a community, is...
I think the thing that as a board and a community is responding with resources and having time. It's a very important valuable commodity. People, several things that have come out of this, and it's not just Onslow County Schools. When you look and, and read about what's happening across the country, there are several key issues. One is equity, the haves and the have-nots. Uh, the access to Wi-Fi. We assume that every child and family has access to Wi-Fi. They don't. Even in Jones County, they have to travel somewhere to get the Wi-Fi. The EC population, that has been a concern for us as well, again, with any other school system in the country. Teachers, parents, it has been a, a huge challenge for everybody. Uh, I think communication has been good from our, from our district office as, as much as possible.
Thank you.
The foundations of math and reading have to be established by the third grade. After that point in time, everything that they're doing is building upon those foundations. So we've had a problem, as has been mentioned before by several members here, in that area. So we do need to build up on that, if, especially if that's already lacking. Um, the best way to do it now with the other things that have been thrown against us with the distance learning and the COVID is tutoring. Not everybody can afford to go out and get, you know, trained by Silven or the other organizations to that effect. So we do, as several members have already mentioned, have to establish things with our community partners. There's a lot of smart people out there, there are a lot of smart organizations out there that are willing to interact as soon as we go out and ask them for it. Though, one of my basic things I've always said is get back to the basics. It's one of my biggest campaign slogans. And one of those things in there is also allowing the teachers to have the flexibility within their schedules. Because again, our teachers are the ones that are directly teaching them right there. And if they have the flexibility, they can add some of that tutoring into their own schedules. So give our teachers the flexibility they need.
Uh, I do believe that, uh, we're going to really have to rethink teaching and learning. Uh, I, I, I think one thing that, uh, the, the, this time off, uh, from school, the time we have not had face-to-face instruction has probably given parents a new perspective on what teaching and learning is, particularly those parents who have had the time to work with their children and see exactly what goes on in a classroom, because they, they can see the teacher in action. So I, I, I do believe we're going to have to prioritize what children really need to know and be able to do. Um, it, it, it may, again, there may be a silver lining to this whole thing. I, I do believe there is a new appreciation for teachers. I think teachers are beginning to rethink, uh, the way that they've been teaching. And maybe there are some things that we can do, some additional things we can do with our community partners, as, as was already mentioned. And particularly some things that we can do to truly, truly make the, our EC students, uh, uh, more, uh, more able to, to do what they need to do.
Thank you. Uh, do, do there a rebuttal? Okay, there you go.
It's not really a rebuttal, it's not really a rebuttal to anyone in particular, but, um, to the, to the current board overall. Um, you know, we've heard that, you know, we've had these issues before Florence. We've had these issues for years. Well, we have members on the board that have been on the board for years. Why haven't they been rectified by now? Why are we just now having an EC conversation? Because now we have candidates that are here that are willing to take charge of that area and make sure that we find solutions for those parents and those children. Why is it that those parents did not know that, you know, they could send their children to school four days a week? So we have some issue with communication that needs to be rectified so people know what options they have to serve their children.
Okay, Ms. Fabriato?
And I also want to mention, um, I believe in best practices, like I mentioned earlier. Um, we got to look at why is Carteret County, um, they're 20-something miles away from us, and they're ranking 38, um, in, in North Carolina, while we're ranking 118. So why is Carteret County, they're so close to us, and they have less openings for teachers than Onslow County? So what are they doing, um, as far as best practices to, of course, get higher, um, grades for math and reading? And they have less openings. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I will.
Okay.
I, I want to explain something about that. You have to look at the demographics of a county when you're looking at the results of testing and performance. And we have a wide variety of demographics that other counties do not. We are the 13th largest county in North Carolina. And so our challenges are going to be a lot greater. Uh, I, I too am concerned about the EC population, and anyone who's called me knows that I am.
Thank you. All right, and we have another rebuttal?
Yes, sir.
I need to respond to the math situation. Having been a math teacher for 17 years, that's close and dear to my heart. And I want you to know, part of our problem has been certification for element, and I'm not knocking elementary teachers, they're doing a great job. Many of them have not had any math courses. How can you teach, when you teach, you teach what you love. And if you haven't had that certification in courses, it's pretty tough for you to teach that subject. We have come under contract with East Carolina. We're now having a special class for elementary teachers in math certification, and they're taking extra courses, and we're paying for it.
Thank you.
So we're hoping that'll help.
All right. Mr. Whitfield, you get first crack at this one. Is there anybody else that did a rebuttal on that one? I'm going to go on forward. You get first crack at this one. Outside of COVID, we'll leave COVID for a minute. What do you see as the most significant challenge facing Onslow County school systems? And what solutions would you propose to address it?
We have a overcrowding problem, uh, because of, because of the unique dynamics of Onslow County. We have people coming into our community a lot. Um, people like myself and Mr. Speranza, you know, got out of the military and stayed here in town. So that, that happens a lot. We have a lot of growth that can't be controlled. We have a North Carolina Opportunity Scholarship that allows us to, it allows students to go to a private school, um, with state funds without having to pay for the private school. And we can utilize that, but we don't have the capacity even in the private school system in Onslow County. So I think probably a lot of, a lot of churches we're going to have to work with, uh, because they have the, the construction, they already have the building there to house a school. And people are not going to build schools because they don't know how long this school voucher program is going to last. Um, but I think that's something we got to utilize, that resource that we now have that's just come up in the last few years.
Mr. Wiggins?
Certainly our expansion. We've been in a real building mode. Uh, the new school, elementary school in Richlands, the middle school at Dixon, the new school that's now under, uh, construction in Folkeston in that area, another one in the Catherine's Lake area. We're a growing county. It's going to continue to be a problem for us, building and funding that building. And we've had great cooperation with our county commissioners, because they realize the problem too. We, in the Dixon area, the Marsoc base in California is closing. They're coming here, there's to send 800 one year and 800 the next year. So keeping up with the growth and at the same time, the quality of education for our children.
All right, thank you. And, uh, we will swing it around to Ms. Fabriato.
Okay. Um, I think the biggest challenge that we have, um, is the retention of our teachers. Um, with our growing population in Onslow County, we have, you know, 300-plus, uh, children that join our, um, uh, district, um, each year. And we have so many openings for teachers, um, exceptional, uh, children, teachers, tutors, custodians, bus drivers. And, um, we need to drill down on the culture. Why are we losing so many, um, teachers to other counties? I know teachers that live right here in Onslow County that drive to other counties to teach. So that's a problem. Um, we also need to look at, you know, um, with the growth, you know, we need to retain. So I was happy to see that, um, there is a retention, uh, bonus that was just approved. So, you know, but we need to do other things to keep, uh, teachers here. And we need to recruit teachers for Onslow County. Because if we continue to grow, we won't have enough teachers to teach our, um, children.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Oakley?
Um, could you repeat the question specifically, please?
Pardon me?
Could you repeat the question specifically?
Sure. Uh, outside of COVID-19, what do you see as the most significant challenge facing Onslow County school system? And what solutions would you propose to address it?
Okay, well, I agree with practically everything Ms. Fabriato just said. Um, I do believe that we need to forecast, forecast growth because we do have a, um, a, a housing issue as far as it goes with having schools that'll fit all the children that we have. Since we're opening back up, that is going to be an issue that we need to get back into looking at. Um, I want to go ahead and touch on the EC population, resources, and expansion because that is a huge issue. And that portion of our population has gone overlooked. You know, we say we're concerned, but we're not making anything as far as strides goes for those children. Um, in December 2014, the IEP numbers were 3,800 and, um, 3,875 children that had IEPs. In 2019, December, that was 4,231. Um, we had 372 children in 2014 with 504s and then 617 in 2020 February. Um, as far as that goes, we have one parent liaison for E, for the EC population. She's been out on maternity leave. We need someone to step in the gaps so those parents can still get those resources they need for their students, no matter what the process is.
All right, thank you. Mr. Reddick?
Definitely attracting and retaining teachers is, is next to COVID, I think, is, is our biggest, uh, challenge right now. You know, we live in a unique, uh, environment here. We live in a military community where people have traveled, lived all over the world, and they bring a lot of talent here. Some of the very best teachers I ever hired were teachers who had been, uh, in different parts of the country and the world. So we do have a, a kind of a constant flow of teachers in, but let's face it, at some point, uh, they're going to be moving out. We do, uh, I think as long as we retain and maybe even increase our teacher, uh, uh, supplement, I, I do believe we've got to do that and maybe even try to increase it if possible. We have an excellent mentoring program here in Onslow County. We have a new teacher orientation program that not only addresses some of the needs they need for to be good teachers, but how to survive and make it in, in this community in a, in a more productive way. So I, I do believe that we're going to have to be very aggressive and be competitive with other school systems in recruiting teachers.
Thank you, Mrs. Crayson.
The overall problem is the expansion of our community. We expand, as was already mentioned, over 300 students per year. That's 1 to 30, if you're keeping your, uh, classrooms that around that size, is 10 classrooms a year. Now, we're in the process of building new schools. That's been mentioned several times around. That same problem causes the lack of teachers to fill those classrooms that we have over here. There's a lot that comes with the financial piece of it and affording the programs to go with, into the schools. And all of that, again, is back to what I've always said, go back to your basics. The first thing that you need to do is your human resources. Hire your qualified teachers. Pay them well, that sort of helps with the retention piece of it. Provide them the necessary resources at the right level of what they need. Make sure they're getting what they have. You don't need to see school lists every year as a parent for things that should be provided by the school systems. And then again, as I mentioned before, promote flexible schedules so the teachers have the ability to teach our children. And when they have those flexible schedules, they're more likely to enjoy their job and stay with us as opposed to going somewhere else.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Taylor?
As I stated earlier, I have spent my entire career with Onslow County Schools, meaning I've spent my entire adult life in Onslow County. The rapid growth of our school system and the rapid growth of Onslow County. Uh, I feel the, the number one challenge for us is the teacher shortage. It's not just for us, it's for Carteret County and for every school system across this state and nation. When you go to national conferences, that's the number one thing, is teacher shortage. The second thing is they cannot find math teachers and EC teachers. We have been challenged with that for decades. Uh, uh, teaching institutions are reporting a 30% decline in students enrolling in teacher education preparation programs. And when you go to teacher job fairs, which I have done and several of my board members, you'll find that they're all competing for candidates from a very small pool of potential candidates. They're very competitive. Thomas?
Yesterday, I had an opportunity to respond to the Daily News, um, questionnaire. And the number one thing that I said was teachers. Recruiting, maintaining, keeping, retaining those teachers. And I know that we need to continue to market for teachers. But one of the things that, and I, I will go back to what one of my colleagues said, we have massive growth in Onslow County. Our teacher allotment is based on that growth, but our teacher allotment is from the state. So a lot of our classrooms are overcrowded. We don't have enough classrooms to adhere to the formula that the State Department gives us. So we've got to find out what we can do not only to retain teachers, but to build classrooms so they have an adequate space to teach in.
Okay, thank you. Wiggins?
Having been an administrator for 22 years, I interviewed a lot, hired a lot, and unfortunately had to release some of those. You get what you pay for, guys. You get what you pay for. If you want a hamburger, you eat a hamburger. But if you want a steak, you have to pay a price for it. If we're going to get, recruit, retain teachers, then our legislature, and I'm just calling it the way I see it, you got to pay for it. Pay's been taken away from teachers who have done their master's degrees. That's not right. If a math teacher goes back to school, they get their masters and pays for it, they should be paid on that. So you get what you pay for.
Thank you, Mr. Wiggins. Okay, let's go and we go to Mr. Reddick, we're going to let you, I'm sorry?
Yeah, I just wanted, I'm sorry. I just wanted to add, um, I think we need to drill down on the culture of Onslow County school system. Um, like I mentioned with Carteret, Carteret County, you know, I know each, um, we have the advantage of being a melting pot. We have different, um, cultures here in Onslow County, people that come all over the country to live here. But we need to look at the culture. And, um, comparison to Carteret County, they have 21 openings, but we have over 100. So, and they're only 20 miles away from us. So let's look at the culture.
Okay, thank you. And we have other rebuttals.
I, I don't know what is meant by culture other than the fact that, uh, we, we are unique. We are different than Carteret County. Every county is different. Every county has its own, uh, it, it own strengths, its own deficiencies. But I'm not sure it's a culture problem as much as it is we are just a unique county that deals with a lot of people who move in and out. And it just naturally creates, uh, uh, teacher, uh, openings. So I, I, I'd want us to think more about that, that we're all different.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
I know people like to compare us with other counties, but as has been mentioned before, we are the, uh, about the 11th largest school system in North Carolina out of 115. Carteret County has over about 8,200 kids. We got 27,000. We live in a very transient community. Their local funding per pupil is one of the top, the top five in the state. We're around 50, give or take. So you can't compare us really to other counties unless you're familiar with the data.
Okay, thank you. Uh, we are going to start this question off with Mr. Reddick. And we're going to move this way and then come back around. Um, I try to tell camera people that. Okay, well, let's go with it. We, we're not going to the next question.
Okay, um, I think what Ms. Fabriato was trying to say is that, culture-wise, we need to get familiar with the actual nature of the people and the families that we have in Onslow County. I believe that our board has become out of touch with the actual people, the actual students, the actual dynamic of the people that we have in Onslow County. We need to go back to doing things like town halls, that would help with that kind of thing. Um, raise the, the teacher supplement, but it's not been done in years and years. So you know, what's, what's the problem? You know, we can say these things now, but actually doing them is what matters.
Okay, thank you. We'll go back to Mr. Reddick. I really got two questions about this, but I'm going to have to go to one because we're running out of time. How would you rate the school system's accessibility to parents and the public at large? And what suggestions do you have for making sure parents stay connected in schools? And I would love it if you could talk just a little bit about social media.
Social media, okay. The, I, I think, Elliot, the question is, you know, how do we get more, more parents involved? Okay.
How do you be accessible?
All right. Um, I'll tell you what, schools that provide opportunities for, uh, for parents to come in and, and not only just come to the classrooms to visit, that's one thing, but offer opportunities such as programs, cultural arts kinds of things, demonstrations, where, you know, it's one thing for a child to learn, but if, if you, if children can't show... one thing for a child to learn, but if you if you if children can't show what they know in some kind of demonstration, some type of interactive manner, uh, and it doesn't always have to be at school with the online uh situation we're in right now, there are many, many opportunities. So I do believe that celebrations, learning opportunities, plays, musicals, those those kinds of things really give parents an opportunity. And the second, uh, the social media. Um, I I I think as long as we uh model what good social media looks like, I I do believe that that is a great opportunity for us. But again, we have to model and control it.
All right, well, thank you, sir. Mrs. Poranza.
Well, I'm gonna echo a portion of what Mr. Reddick has said, but uh orientation, science fairs, things that we can actually get back into to show what our kids are doing, not just for the parents to come in and see what the children are doing, but for our communities as well. It'd be nice for a lot of our local businesses to actually come to our high schools and our elementary schools and our middle schools, just to see what they're actually doing, what their future employees are learning towards, having them grade them on something. The plays, absolutely. I'm part of the Jacksonville Performing Arts Company here in uh North Carolina, and I love getting on stage and I love that part of the theater and the arts program that I think we need to bring back. We try to attend, my wife and I, all the plays that we can throughout the different schools. Uh, there's a lot of things that we can do with that. When it comes to the social media aspect, yes, you do have to have somebody that's moderated and, you know, controlling the social media, but we do get contacts out. I mean, right now, they're in the form of our robo-calls that we get from the weeklies, from the principals, Brandon Anderson, whenever we have weather updates that we don't want to hear about or what's gonna close and what's not gonna close. But these are the different things and ways that we can expand on.
Thank you, sir. Taylor?
I think parent involvement has been a a a a good thing, uh, it's for our, for the community and the schools, and it's been a challenge, I think, as parents of elementary children does not a problem because they're gonna make sure that they go to those concerts and they're involved. When your children become middle-aged, they just want you to back up a little bit more, but just see you out of the corner of the eye. And when the children become high school, they want you as far away as possible. And I know that from being a teacher and also a a a parent as well. Uh, communication is the key. I think everybody has access to a phone, but c- communication is a two-way street. It's not where one person talks and the other listens, it's dialogue that's being involved. Social media, I think our schools are doing everything they can to communicate with parents and what's going on, and they're, and I'm always visible in the schools. There are so many activities that our schools are sponsoring to showcase what the talents of our students.
Thank you. Ms. Thomas?
I think we do a wonderful job of showcasing what students do, and during this pandemic, of course, we've probably focused more on some project-based learning that students could do at home, so parents could get involved in doing those. I agree with what all of my colleagues have said. I think that we are uh struggling sometimes in making that communication with parents from, the elementary school seems to be easier, but as you move up the grades, uh, there seems to be less. Uh, athletics is a certainly a drawer for parents to come, as well as our music and arts programs. But we have math counts, we have um Battle of the Books, we have Odyssey of the Minds. You need to go see, see that sometimes. I mean, the parking lot is, has more attendance there than you do at a football game. So we do have opportunities. Quality, quality communication from both sides of the fence is necessary, and it shouldn't always be a teacher calling to say something's wrong, it should be calling to say something good.
Thank you. Ms. Whitfield?
Can you read the question again?
I sure will. Uh, how would you rate uh the school's accessibility uh to the parents and the public at large? And what suggestions might you have for staying better connected uh with parents, schools and parents? And, you know, if you wanna touch on social media, that'd make me happy.
Okay. Um, I'll go ahead and address the social media uh thing right now. Um, I hope somebody else uh deals with that instead of me, because that's not really a strength of mine. Um, but uh about the uh parental involvement, um, I think that uh, I mean, I can't speak for every teacher, but someone that chooses that as a career is probably interested in the child's education. So I believe the parent, the teachers are available. The school board, you know, candidates, I'm sure, would answer their phone if they were called by a parent. So I think there is a very good accessibility, it's just that parents aren't taking advantage of that so much. So I I, the, some of the ideas mentioned are probably better than what I could come up with, uh, but the the school fairs and things like that, social events that maybe the parents come to when there's not a problem, get to meet the teacher at least, I think those are good solutions.
All right, thank you. Ms. Ms. Wiggins?
This is a very important area for me. At Wadoka High School, I, communication is everything, and it's a two-way street, parents and school, but I felt like it was my responsibility. I sent home news letters, cost a lot of money, but I did that. But we had band concerts, chorus concerts, art exhibits, all the athletics, uh, FCA meetings, all kinds of clubs. I wanted the public to come to my school. Cheerleading groups were there. It's, the school belongs to the parents, and I wanted it to be a warm, welcoming situation. We we really do a good job. We can't do that right now as board members with uh the safety issue, but in good times, as my other board members, we're at something every day, every night, an elementary school, a middle school, a high school. Uh, my gracious, if you've been to one of the chorus concerts at Northside High School with the visitors that we have, it's standing room only. But we need to communicate, we want our parents there, our band boosters, our athletic boosters. It's all about teamwork, not just the school.
I think we have a little time an issue, but thank you. I appreciate it.
I could too. Yeah.
In a former day, right?
Yeah.
I like those kind of minutes.
We we serve on the board way, we know that.
We'll go back to you, Ms. Labriato.
Yeah, I thought it was a two-minute question.
You want some of my time?
Well, I think with COVID, I think we all know that um COVID has caused us to have a lot of barriers with communication. So communication is something that is essential, you know, because if you have poor communication, you have misunderstandings, you have assumptions, you have um people that create their own narrative. So we have to be creative when it comes to communication. Um, I think that um as a school district board, um, we can um have virtual uh town hall meetings with the community to reach out to the parents so they know what's going on. We have billboards here in Onslow County. Back in the nineties, we didn't have billboards, so we have have billboards now, we can communicate that way, newsletters. Um, the more you communicate, the better, because we have to make sure that everybody is getting the same information. So I think um making sure that we're creative, making sure that we uh stay connected to the parents is important.
Ms. Arkley?
Um, I think the board meets the system aspect, but not with the public overall. Um, I I've heard a lot about social media and how the challenges could come with that, and somebody needs to moderate and so forth and so on. Well, as a digital reporter, I have experience with that, so I can help us get around those challenges and hurdles with that aspect. Um, communication, um, you know, parents don't feel like they're able to speak to the board and get a proper response to actually satisfy what they feel to be their need for the solution they need for their child. Um, I think we should also be out, like Tukina said, but my idea is to be out in town and do things like breakfast with the BOE, breakfast with a board member, or, you know, any way that you can reach people, because we have to be creative and versatile in how we're meeting um the needs of the families. Um, I think that we could build more on transparency, you know, with special board meetings, you know, there's no no allowance for uh public comment. So I think at every board meeting, there should be a possibility for anybody in the public to speak based on an issue that they have regarding a child in school.
All right, thank you. We're gonna start this line of questions with Mrs. Poranza, and then we're gonna move back around this way. Um, this is a question about pri- about priorities. How important are athletic programs to the education that our children are receiving in Onslow County schools?
I'm sorry, one more, one more time on that part?
Okay, sure. Uh, how important are our athletic programs to the education that our children are receiving in Onslow County schools?
Uh, actually, in this area, in this community, it's a very important aspect of it. We have people from all demographics, and there's a lot of people that, you know, based on lower incomes and what they're not able to do in getting into uh colleges, there's a, there is a big, uh, there's a stricter sense or a fewer academic scholarships than there are out there for athletics. So there's a good portion of our students in this community that rely on athletics to get to that higher education field, and I do agree that athletics are important. There's a lot that comes with being on a team as well, too, the sense of pride, the sense of teamwork, the sense of working together so you can actually do things and accomplish a goal or a mission. So I I do support athletics in every venue, and not only just our sporting athletics, but all of the other ones that you have, from your bands, to your arts, to your choruses, to any other in your orchestra as well. So they're all an important part for not only getting higher education, but for building a solid community.
Mr. Reddick?
Uh, as we all know, schools are a reflection of society, and our society puts a a lot of emphasis on sports, uh, sports heroes, uh, and and role models and such. I I do believe that uh sports are critical to to schools. Um, it certainly builds a sense of community pride. Uh, you know, you can just ask, uh, I'll just use Southwest High School as an example. Man, you you talking about a proud community of of particularly the the football program. That that is just something that permeates throughout the state, and people recognize that. And as Joe mentioned, uh, you know, this business of teamwork, teaching, the the fact that it takes a team to accomplish anything, and and that's very important. The concept of hard work, I'm not sure in this country we understand what really hard work is, but for teams to be successful, you know, it takes a a lot of harm, uh, a lot of hard work. But the idea for a lot of kids is, if I don't keep my grades up, I can't play sports, and that is a big time incentive for kids.
Thank you. Ms. Arkley?
Well, first, I'm gonna be a little partial with this one and say, go Bulldogs, because they brought home the bacon last year for the soccer championship with the state. So I just wanna put that out there, but here we, you know, now we have COVID, where the the sports uh schedule has been delayed. You know, we have people out there in withdrawals from football, from college, I mean, college and high school football right now. Um, so, you know, I think athletics is very important. It builds skills that can carry you through life. You know, you learn how to be a team player. Um, you learn how to also build your own skills, and sometimes you gotta take a hit, you know? So um you learn how to take your wins and your losses through athletics. Um, it is important for us to support our athletic programs because, but you know, like it's already been said, this is sometimes the avenue that some children, their only opportunity to have a higher education. Some children go on to college because of a scholarship that they obtain through sports, um, and they become the first college graduates or, you know, even go into a pro sport.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Ms. Labriato?
And I have to agree with Joseph, Ken, and Melissa. Um, I I I'm a uh cheerleader for uh athletics. I had my two girls, they danced, you know, all the way from three years old to they graduated high school. So I think af- um, to to be a cheerleader for athletics, you're gonna make sure that, you know, the kids are, you know, it builds their self-esteem, it builds teamwork, um, you know, they know how to have friendly competition, um, and also it helps, you know, the boot, they boost, it boosts their confidence. So um I am a um supporter of athletics in school. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, and we'll swing, swing around to Mr. Wiggins.
That's a pretty tough question for a former football coach and wrestling coach and all that. But I'm telling you right now, uh, certainly our children are in school for their academic education, but uh, sports teaches them so much more about competition, about winning, about losing, life skills. If you get knocked down, it's not a matter that you get knocked down, it's how long you stay there and how quickly you get up. And that's true of all aspects. I am particularly concerned that in our schools, we have lost with the athletics a lot of the effective domain. I want the clock to start like it did last time. Character education, that too is a part of athletics. Some students stay in school because of band, some students stay in school because of athletics. It's a complimentary, a supplementary thing, very important.
Thank you, Ms. Whitfield.
Wow, I get to be the outsider. I think it's bizarre that that um that sports has married itself to education because they're two separate activities. Educating children should be our priority. Throwing a ball around could be fun, but I don't see the connection. I mean, I I have theories of how it happened, uh, but I think it's a bizarre tradition that we have, but that doesn't mean that I wouldn't support athletics or whatnot, but I'm not enthusiastic about it. I think it's actually kind of strange, and I can't think of a better word, but kind of perverted, even, that they're together as one thing, because they're two separate things. Education should be about, I don't know, education?
Thank you.
A- as a teacher, I'll tell you why I have this kind of feeling. As a teacher, it was frustrating to say, oh, we're not having class today for these five kids, but these and the other five kids got behind, and it was frustrating as a teacher to. Sports was more important than education, I thought.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Thomas?
Well, as a former coach, I really am concerned about the effects of athletics on our students. I think it's a great effect on our students. First of all, they do have to have certain grades to be able to play. They can't just go in and say, I wanna be on the volleyball team or the football team. They have to meet certain prerequisites before they can even try out. So i- it it's important to develop their sportsmanship, teamwork, they need to learn how to fail, they need to know how to win properly, they need to know how to be respectful of their other teammates. Athletics is not just about playing a sport, it's about learning some life skills. So I am very supportive of it, and I I hope that Onslow County will continue to look at the developmental sports and the middle schools, because um they need those as well. And I I'm telling you, I miss some football. I even cheered for Carolina when they played the other night, so.
Okay, Ms. Thomas?
I am all in favor of supporting and developing the total child, as academic, physical, and emotional. My background is in the emotional side, the arts. My experiences in developing music programs and musicals and the, did starting the orchestra program in nineteen ninety-one, it, that's what it's been about for me. But as a high school band director, I spent many Friday nights going and traveling and supporting our football team and then basketball and so forth, and it's an extracurricular activity. As men mentioned earlier, uh, there are a lot of students who, if it wasn't for their participation in sports, they would drop out of school. If it wasn't for my participation in band, while I was growing up in Kinston, I would not be sitting here today. We're talking about student athletes, they have high expectations, and there's so many lessons learned from playing sports. So it's a very important part of our um um school district, and we're well-known throughout the state. I don't have to say anymore about that.
All right, well, thank you very much. I think we're down to our last question, and after that, we'll start with the uh with the summations. Um, with a re- while the recent focus has been on the pandemic, the issue of school safety is never far from our parents' minds. What actions would you support to make our schools as safe as possible? And I'm gonna start with Ms. Thomas, and we're gonna go down this way.
We have a lot of um devices that protect our schools in safety areas, and of course, you know that we don't share those publicly because we don't want to. We feel like that that's something that we need to protect. We also have programs like um See Something, Say Something, so students can report things. We have an anonymous reporting system that students and parents can call into, and it's monitored daily. We know that we need to probably be stronger at making sure the security of our outside buildings are protected more because they are uh removed from some of our alarm systems, but that will be done. Um, we are constantly encouraging our teachers to step outside in the hall to see what's going on. Our SRO officers have made a wonderful addition to our staff, and they've become part of that, and the students trust them, so anything that they need to report, they they do with them.
Thank you. And uh, Mr. Taylor?
I think it's been mentioned several times that the safety and security and health of our employees, our students, is first and foremost. Uh, Ms. Thomas mentioned the See Something, Say Something program in all sc- in our schools, and there are other programs as well. For over twenty years, we've had a presence of the Crime Stoppers program, which is well-known throughout the state. On every bus, there is a decal, if we're providing information about uh contact number for crime stoppers. In every locker, there is a decal, we're uh encouraging kids to say something, do something. Um, we've added SROs at the elementary level, not to be based inside full-time, but to share with the with county schools, elementary schools out in the county. share with county schools, elementary schools out in the county. Our doors remain locked. We're doing everything we can to provide a safe and secure place for our staff and students, so teaching and learning can take place.
Thank you. Mrs. Sporanza?
Protecting our students is one of the three points that I have in my whole campaign of being back to the basics. First thing I always had with it is our utilization of our resource officers. The partnership that we have with the Onslow County Sheriff's Department is phenomenal. I do always think that we should always review and make sure that we have the correct amount of resource officers at our schools, to make sure that they're appropriately placed, to make sure that they're not just sitting around in an office, that they're actually being visible and walking the deck plates of our schools. So that way, our students know that they have somebody to go to if there's a problem, if they need to say something or need to address something. The other portion of that goes on to the mental health aspect, making sure that we have enough mental counselors for our students at all the grade levels that they're needed. So that way, any problems can be circumvented before we come to the need of having a safety issue. Reviewing all of our safety policies, that would be something that I would do if I get elected to the board, and as Ms. Thomas already mentioned, you don't advertise those to the public, because you don't want the enemy to know what you're actually doing, so they don't know how to circumvent it. And I'm just gonna go for a few more seconds, if you don't mind.
Well, let's do it, let's keep the program, though.
Okay, just keep going and come back to it. All right, there you go.
It's all about teamwork, forging partnerships with our community partners. And we're talking about not only law enforcement, but also certain school personnel that may have some expertise in this area, the medical community, the mental health community, and of course, parents. So, you know, working together, having the partnerships that we already have, and maybe even thinking about some more partnerships is gonna be the key. And really, it's about leadership. The Board of Education, along with the community resource people, have to have these, have to be involved in leadership. You know, things don't happen unless somebody steps up. I do believe that we have done some things, not only to harden the schools with all the devices and such, but we've hired additional SROs, we've hired, we've conducted training on suicide prevention programs, we have school safety grants that have increased the number of counselors that we have, and I think all this together puts us in a pretty good position.
Thank you. Ms. Hartley?
As far as safety goes, it's kind of simple. You know, I was just talking to some parents a week or so ago, and I was, I learned about one of our elementary schools in the county not having working cameras, not having working sensors to detect when there's movement inside of a school in case of a break-in. Well, this elementary school had a break-in, and there was sugar, just something silly, poured all over the hallways and things like that. So a simple, effective method was to ensure that our cameras and our sensor stuff is working inside of the schools. You know, Onslow County is a member of the National Safety Council that fully supports safety initiatives. Like Joe said, you know, our sheriff's office is already in a great partnership with the school. The most thing that we have to deal with is threats. Sheriff Miller told me that last year. There are idle threats that really don't lead to much destruction. However, you know, we just need to educate the students. And I think, like he wanted to do, have the sheriff's office come back into the school. He said he loved to talk to students in the school. They love doing assemblies and things like that. So allow community partnerships to begin again. You know, we used to have the DARE program and things like that. So we need to have community partners communicating.
Thank you. Ms. Labriato, we're talking about school safety.
Safety is crucial, you know? Everybody wants their children safe, you know? Teachers want to be safe. So we gotta make sure that we continue with the partnerships that we have in the community already, our SROs. We gotta make sure that we are supporting our teachers. We gotta keep that line of communication open, you know, for anonymous reporting. But we also gotta make sure that we keep our eyes open, you know? We need to be out there, you know, in the hallways, making sure that if we see somebody with a change of behavior, if they, you know, need to be, you know, we notice when children might be a little depressed. You know, we need to be out there, and we need to be observant of any change behavior. And just also education. We need to make sure we educate regarding bullying, making sure that we, you know, talk to the kids, the teachers, you know, regarding safety.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Wiggins?
We have a lot of safety programs, but it really boils around teamwork. Teamwork with the school, teamwork with the sheriff and his department, teamwork with parents, having an open communication. Our SROs are real important. I was fortunate enough at White Oak High School to have one SRO for seven or eight years, and he had been a graduate from White Oak High School. There was a confidence gain between him and the students. Leadership, it starts there. I required my teachers to all stand at their doors between classes. Visibility is everything. I just think, and we really work hard at that, but it's a teamwork effort, safety-wise, and it's important, something that we must do every day. I wanted to arrive at my school first thing in the morning. I wanted to walk my halls before anyone got there. Visibility is everything.
Thank you, Mr. Whitfield.
Yes, of course, you know, security is gonna be important, safety is gonna be important. And I think sometimes maybe you take the procedures that you have for granted, so maybe systematically revisiting the safety procedures that you have on a regular basis, maybe once a quarter, maybe once a year, I don't know how often, but, because new technologies come out, incidents, like Melissa Oakley pointed out, things happen, and so you try to prepare for that, you know, to prevent something similar from that happening again. So I think just revisiting, Mr. Wiggins said, daily, maybe, maybe that's appropriate as well, but just to revisit the safety procedures and make improvements as much as possible.
All right, thank you. We are two summations, we're tight on time. I'm gonna go ahead and say up to two minutes, but, and Mr. Taylor, I am gonna start with you, since you haven't gone first yet. Now's your turn.
Thank you for that.
And we'll move this direction, and then come back and swing this way.
I am running for reelection to the Onslow County Board of Education for the same reasons I served as a teacher, district administrator, and current school board member. And that is to make a difference in the lives of students by providing opportunities for student success. I believe public education is the foundation of our democracy. I believe education is the passport out of poverty, and I firmly believe that our teachers are the foundation and inspiration for all professions. Today's students require a different skill set to help prepare them for life after graduation. Most jobs and careers will require additional education and training. However, a strong educational foundation and a desire to be a lifelong learner is paramount in order to meet the challenges of an ever-changing economy. I'm very proud of the accomplishments in the Onslow County schools. The district has received state and national recognition in many areas, particularly in technology. But I think we've all recently learned that the greatest technology cannot be a substitute for having a highly qualified and passionate teacher standing in front of the classroom. Our board has worked hard to establish a positive working relationship with the Board of Commissioners, resulting in a renewed joint education funding agreement. I would like to thank our teachers, administrators, and entire staff, especially Dr. Barry Collins, our superintendent, and his leadership team, who have worked extremely hard to meet the demanding challenges brought on by Hurricane Florence and the pandemic. As a school board member, I pledge to continue to be a strong advocate for the Onslow County schools, and I will greatly, greatly appreciate one of your four votes in the upcoming election. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas.
Thank you for hosting this today, and also for Piedmont Natural Gas being the sponsor. I'm really happy that I was able to be on this Board of Education for 16 years, and I do want to continue to be a member of this board. There's work to be done. I'm an advocate. I believe that education is truly the one thing that can level the playing field for all children. We need to foster continual community involvement with our schools. If you go to ever attend one of our bases, award ceremonies, you will see the number of partnerships that we have with our businesses. My entire life, my professional life, has been in education. I have taught, coached, been a supervisor and director. I've worked at the college level, and I still have a vested interest in what is going on in our schools. You should too. You should have a vested interest, because the students that we're educating today are gonna be taking care of us tomorrow. So we want to make sure that they have all of the skills that they need, whether it be a college-ready skill or just a career-ready skill. They need to be prepared. I am an advocate, I have a listening ear. Anyone who knows me can see that I, if they looked at my emails, I have a stack of emails almost daily. I respond to every one of those. I don't always give them the answer they want, but I do respond to them. I don't mind anyone calling me. I hope that I can receive one of your votes, and I think that you will be paid off with a lot of dedication and time. I go to almost every event recently. We went out to pray around the flagpole at 6:30 in the morning. So we are dedicated in attending all types of events and making people know that we are interested in the way children are educated. Thank you again for letting me be here today.
Thank you. And Mr. Whitfield?
I've spent eight years branding myself as a loyal Republican. And so due to, you know, recent events, I'm in a very awkward situation. The Republican Party's position is do not vote for Eric Whitfield. So I have to say a really strange thing that you've probably never heard from a candidate before. Please do not vote for me. However, if I do end up winning this election, I will serve you well. Even though I may be an eccentric candidate, and you may know my antics from previous elections, this election, I try to make the election exciting. But if I do get elected, I will be a boring board member. I will vote loyally to the, I'll vote loyally with the candidate that receives the most votes in this election, and hopefully that person will become the chairman. So I will not be an eccentric board member. I just do that as part of the election process, to make it fun for everyone. So do not be scared to vote for me. However, I have to ask you, as part of my brand, as a loyal Republican, do not vote for Eric Whitfield. Thank you.
Mr. Wiggins?
I have always made decisions that were good for my students. And I have always tried to take care of my students the way I wanted my own children taken care of. I have been blessed to work with many fine students and teachers in the Dixon community. Could not have started at a better place. It formed who I became and what it was all about for me. Then the Swansboro community, and then the White Oak community. A lot of great students in Onslow County, and I loved them then, and I love them now. And 39 years, I think, tells the story. I could have retired with 30 years, didn't even think about it, because I love children. And if you're sitting there, all due respect for everyone at this table, and I thank you for running for the board. But if you think this old guy has lost his fire, his passion, and his compassion, you better look again. I've served two terms on the board, and I hope to serve another one. And my view, my vision will not change. I will do what's best for your children, because I want every child to have an equitable opportunity to learn, to grow, and to be successful.
Thank you. Labriato?
Thank you, Mr. Potter, for this opportunity for today's forum. Onslow County Public Schools' vision is excellence in education. It is time to move towards excellence and exceed or meet the state benchmarks with math and reading. I have over 20 years' experience of leadership to move the Board of Education in the right direction. I have been successful in my current position, who oversees the influenza program at the local hospital, and I have exceeded the state benchmarks and national benchmarks for that measure. And I did that through educating the staff, daily surveillance, monitoring, having transparency with the data, and that's what we need on the board and for Onslow County. I'm a supporter for the public schools, and I feel that public schools need proper funding. We need to start supporting our teachers and staff. Teachers are feeling undervalued and underserved. Onslow County Public Schools needs a change to the culture to retain and recruit teachers for our county. There is no reason for an Onslow County resident that is a teacher to go to another county to teach. There is no reason that we should not be transparent with our information that we give the community. So there's no more time for closed doors. It's time to be transparent. Education is the foundation of who we are. Education shapes our community, our businesses, and our future leaders. So vote for me, to Kenya Labriato, because I will create a culture of respect for our teachers by increasing teacher pay to at least the national average, expanding early childhood education, keeping our classrooms safe from the spread of COVID, improving teacher retention and recruitment, increasing EC funding, and we will support all kids, all teachers in Onslow County. Thank you.
Thank you. Hartley?
I believe with my experience as a parent of students for 22 years, I don't have the professional experience that most of these people at this table have. However, it is my job as a parent to ensure my child's education. So I believe that between personally and professionally, I can be a vital asset to the board by expanding horizons for a better community with relationships, seeking and presenting solutions, and be an advocate for all involved, whether it's teachers, students, or staff. I will serve being focused on the best interest of each individual child. While today we have this board and the process of obtaining a seat on this board being made a mockery, it is not a mockery to us. It's not a mockery to most of us at this table. An effective board member appreciates and honors constructive criticism, divergent opinions, as well as praise, representing the entire community, not a select group of area or constituency. My goal as an elected official on this board is to be honest at all times, to be transparent, and ensure that the citizens of Onslow County, our parents, teachers, staff members of OCS have accessibility, as well as my availability, through a variety of communication and information. There have been controversial conversations arise already in this school year with transparency being the subject. We need more of it. We need a solution for it. That is our job. I will increase my engagement with the public online through visibility and in the communities we serve. My platform is online. I have a lot of platform points, and some of them have already been completed since I've been running for office. You can view my entire platform online at electmelissaokley.org. I hope to have your vote on November 3rd, because I will be completely committed to serving you, your families, and your children's needs.
Thank you. Mr. Reddick?
During early voting and on November 3rd, citizens will go to the polls and vote for candidates they feel have the ability to lead the Onslow County school system. I believe that our citizens deserve school board members who have the time and expertise to build relationships with school and community partners. Help me make Onslow County schools a model of excellence for the entire state of North Carolina by giving me your vote and support. If elected, I can promise these three things. Work collaboratively with fellow board members, school personnel, and the community. Second, use common sense and fiscal responsibility when it comes to taxpayers' money. Third, hold the superintendent, his staff, and myself accountable for managing and leading the school system. Some recent accomplishments that we, as a board, and no one board member can claim any fame here, it's a group effort. We've opened two new schools and a regional skills center with two more schools under construction. We've worked collaboratively with the Board of Commissioners on revising our funding formula. We've expanded partnerships with Coastal Carolina with the Early College and Dual Credit Opportunities. We've increased safety measures at schools, including equipment, SROs, counselors, teacher training, and so forth. We've hired a great new superintendent, Dr. Barry Collins, and we've guided Onslow County schools through Hurricane Florence and the aftermath of COVID. I ask that you, the citizens, support me in leading Onslow County schools to its quest for excellence in education. When it's all said and done, our goal and my goal is to focus on student achievement. When all the moving parts work together, then we can achieve that environment of high expectations. I promise to be fair and impartial in considering all issues affecting the Onslow County school system and the citizens of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Sporanza?
I'm running for the Board of Education, because I'm dedicated to making our community better. Everything that I've been involved in speaks to that matter. I've been on the advisory boards for our local USO. I've been...
advisory boards for our local USO. I've been on board directors for our Corman Memorial Foundation, for the Fleet Reserve Association. I've been a coach for Jazz Soccer, for Storm Football. I'm on the, a member of the Jacksonville Performing Arts Company. I'm a lifetime member of the VFW, adult leader for our local Boy Scout troop. I'm a member of the North Carolina Sheriff's Association. When it comes to the Board of Education, everything I've done has been, or said, has been about back to the basics. Three points: human resources, fiscal management, and protecting our students. Human resources, I mentioned a little earlier, hiring our qualified teachers, paying them well, providing them the resources that they need to do their job, and promoting flexible schedules for them so they can actually complete their tasks. Fiscal management falls under building more schools, transparency in our budget, removing unnecessary testing, and utilizing forecasting formulas to accomplish those. When it comes to protecting our students, utilization of our resource officers, providing more mental health counselors, reviewing our safety policies for our school systems and our children, and increasing our bullying education. Each of these things can be accomplished, and each of these things are feasible to do. If you vote for me, I work very well with everybody that I normally walk in with every one of these other associations that I've already dealt with. So again, collaboration with our school board and our community partners is something that will come easily for me. I encourage everybody, regardless of who you're voting for, to come out on the elections, whether it's through early voting or on Election Day, and cast your votes. The more people that we have voting, the better we're actually working as a community. So that's all I have.
Thank you, and I thank you all for a very engaging program, and I'm gonna turn it over to Lorette Leagann.
Okay. Thank you, Elliot. And I want to thank all of the candidates for your willingness to work for the betterment of education in Onslow County. You are going for a very, very important position, so best of luck to all of you. I also want to thank the city of Jacksonville for the use of these facilities and media services, and again, a thank you to our forum sponsor, Piedmont Natural Gas. Anybody, if you missed part of the forum, just check the listings on G10 for rebroadcast times and date. And please remember, your vote has power. Absentee ballot request forms are available online at the Onslow County Board of Elections website, as well as the dates, times, and location for early one-stop voting. I wish I could go shopping again. Election Day is November 3rd from 6:30 a.m. to 7:30 p.m. at your local precinct. On behalf of the Jacksonville-Onslow Chamber of Commerce, thank you for joining us for this forum, and we stand adjourned.